Let's call this meeting to order. Meeting is called to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City of West Miami Regular City Commission Meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 16th. It is 7:31 PM. Madam Manager, I know you just got here, but take your time. The manager is going to do the invocation for us this evening, so if we can all rise.
Thank you, please rise. Let's bow our head and pray to God for peace. We invite God to preside over this meeting, to guide our elected officials even when there are difficult opinions and discussions, to give us all the unity of spirit, to help us with, to listen politely to each other as we share points of views. God help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us work as a whole, and may we have the spirit of camaraderie in this room, and may all of us who work together and labor on behalf of the City of West Miami share our mission to better serve the residents. We pray for the people of Ukraine and all of the men and women who are fighting to defend their freedoms. We pray for our servicemen and women, our law enforcement officers and firefighters, and for all the residents of our fine city of West Miami. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mr. Attorney, would you lead us in the pledge this evening, sir?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call.
Item three, roll call. Mayor Roger Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Commissioner Candy Dablanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanés. Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you, next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for March 2nd, 2022 Regular Commission Meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, before we go into public comments, I'd like to take out of order item, under unfinished business 10A and B, Ms. Torres is here and she has little ones at home that she needs to get back to, so I'd like to please have you read item 10A.
Yes, Madam Mayor, item 10, unfinished business, and item 10A, request for mitigation of liens for code violations at 6237 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, and owner Sarah Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Penna.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Mayor. This property was cited over a year ago for having converted the house into a multifamily situation. It was corrected eventually, but in that time period, it accumulated several amount of fines, and that's what they're here today to mitigate.
And everything has been corrected?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a recommendation from staff as to the city's cost with this file?
Go ahead, Juan, we discussed it.
The manager and I have discussed it, and the work that it entailed to get correction on the property, 15% is what we recommend.
And that amount would be $8,092, and $8,092.
Well, I like to stay away from percentages, you guys know that. I, percentages mean nothing to me. And this is, this is, we've had files come before us that were years and years and years in length. This one, you said, was just within the last year, correct?
What, what occurred here is you had different types of violations, and so we discussed the amount instead of isolating each violation. It's a recommendation that we've made to address all of the violations together.
So, so how many violations are there?
There were one, two, three, four violations.
And what are they?
Building permits.
It's in our pocket, it's in your pocket.
It's in your pocket, building permit, noise, multifamily, and occupational license.
Seventeen thousand for noise? Seventeen thousand for occupational license? Someone explain that to me.
The house was being used as an Airbnb without being licensed through the city, so there were instances where the police department was called out there because of noise complaints from neighbors of the tenants that were there temporarily causing disturbance.
Is it still an Airbnb?
No.
No, okay. So the noise cleared, occupational license cleared, multifamily, that's been rectified, building permit, is that building, construction without a permit, is that what that means? And that's been cleared as well?
Ben, originally, how many bedrooms was the house?
Don't recall exactly, I believe the house, the way it was built, has the ability of being split. We've had that with that house in the past with the different additions that were added to it over the years. I believe it has, in the neighborhood of four to five bedrooms with multiple baths. Pretty big house.
Ms. Torres, did you wish to address us this evening? Absolutely, come right up. If you would just give us your name and address for the record, and then take your time.
Hi, how are you? My name is Sarah Torres, I live at 6237 Southwest 16th Street. I lived there about six years. I did, I did have the Airbnb. I explained that in the last two years, I've been, I'm going through a really rough divorce, where with my three children, I have a stayaway order from them, from, with my, me and my children with their dad. I almost foreclosed on my home, and that was the only reason why I had done the Airbnb.
Understood.
I did not intend for anything. There was one instance where there was noise, unfortunately, and that, you know, it was a big issue. Two days after the hearing, my original hearing, I had the inspector, Mr. Martin Garcia, he went out, he cleared, everything was fine, there was no building permit or multifamily. I know that in the past, it does have like a duplex look, you know, so it does have the original bathroom there, I have not built anything, has the original bathroom and a room that's like separate from the house, like it looks strange. You know, it is, it was, it's called a twin home, but it is a considered multi, single family home. So it is just the way that, the look of the house, but I have not built anything. I'm, I'm a single mom with three kids, you know, I didn't come to the October, I missed, I apologize for that.
It's okay.
But I, again, like I said, that time period that I was doing the Airbnb was really to bring myself out of debt.
Understood.
And I love City of West Miami, I have my children here, going to school here, I have no intention of leaving, you know, that is our home. And a debt, I would like for it to be considered that putting a lien on my home would cost me financially, you know, in hardship. So, I apologize for the stress of that, you know? It did take long, it was, May 5th was the original violation date. And as soon as I got it, I did, I went to Martin, I did everything, the procedures, asking for a hearing, the hearing was in October, so that time was really just waiting for the date for a hearing. And as soon as, not for October, excuse me, it was July. So July was the original hearing, and then he did tell me that I had to take care of going back to fight the fines, and I completely forgot.
Understood.
I, I'm not trying to make it a pity party, I have my children in therapy for trauma and PTSD, and trying to make them pass because of COVID, I'm trying to make ends meet.
Having three kids at home, I can understand how you forget things, it's completely understandable.
I do, and I'm just trying to make that happen, so the Airbnb is not happening anymore. And I just didn't want to, to say there was no multi-family, I know that in the past there has been, not with me.
So that was, that was before you, before you even moved in?
That was before, yes, I know, because when I moved in, there was like a complaint about a multifamily, I came and I, and I, it was cleared, you know? But they said it was a second violation, I guess because they did have it previously to me buying the home. But I mean, that's, it's our home, there's no more Airbnb, so I would like for it to be considered as a resident of West Miami.
Now, I have a question.
Sure.
Do you live in the house?
Yeah, with my three children.
You live in the house, you, you used to rent a bedroom and a bathroom, that's what you were doing?
No, I mean, I've had a cousin that has lived with me, yes, that she was using the room in the bathroom, yes, and it has a separate entrance, but she shares the house with us, that's all.
Are you, are you questioning the Airbnb portion of it, Commissioner, is that what your question is?
Yeah, I heard that once she's renting.
No, Airbnb is, is a, is a shared platform.
Yeah, but apparently she was doing that, that was she said.
One time, one time, and it was, it's clear, that's, only one time? That's what she said.
I have a question for Mr. Penna.
Go ahead, Mr. Penna.
So, so this was an Airbnb and it was unlicensed?
That's correct.
Okay, so how long was it an Airbnb and was she not paying the license?
We don't know how long it was in existence, we, again, was, it was reported to us by the police department once a disturbance went out there regarding people being very loud at night. How long it existed, we have no way of knowing.
To a sister, I'm considering maybe if, if, if you all are in agreement, you know, have her pay for whatever the licensing was.
She's no longer an Airbnb.
But she was, and she didn't pay, she broke the law.
You can't have an occupational license for something you don't have. It's no longer, it's no longer an Airbnb.
He's not talking about occupational license, he's talking about the registration fee for the Airbnb.
Registration fee, you know, everyone that wants to have an Airbnb in West Miami, they need to follow the law, they need to follow our rules and regulations.
What's the registration fee for an Airbnb, Mr. Penna?
And how, and how long was, how many years did you operate your Airbnb?
I had it like a month, really, and it just, it was a bad time because it was during spring break.
It was just a month?
This was one, she said this was one instance, one instance, she said that.
Yeah, but the police been there a bunch of times?
No, it was just one instance, and that's what caused the noise.
So where's the seventeen thousand dollars that you mentioned?
Exactly, accrued, accrued fines.
On noise?
Yes, but it was one instance.
And I cleared the violations as soon as we had the hearing in July.
I don't understand that.
Sorry.
Again, once the report comes in, the notice is issued, okay? The notice has a penalty assessed with it. After the first 15 days, it's at one fee. After the 15th day, it starts accumulating daily until we get correction. So during that period of time is where those amounts of money accumulate. I don't have the file with me here, it's not something that you bring to a mitigation. A mitigation is you have a fee, what you're going to lower it to, that's it. It's not discuss the whole issue, because that went before the Code Enforcement Board, they took care of that.
It's been that way the whole time, that's, that's the process, it's been that way in, in, as long as we've had it. The process hasn't changed, the fines accrue, it's always been that way.
Yeah.
Nobody's arguing that.
I have a question for her, for her. Do you have childrens?
I do, I have three children.
How many children you have?
Three.
Three?
Yes. They go to Selvania Heights Elementary.
I recommend we waive the fee entirely, that's my recommendation.
So you recommend it's eight thousand dollars?
No, I recommend zero, we waive the fee entirely.
No, I'm talking to the manager.
Mr. Penn and I went over the violations, and that's what I'm, yes.
Your recommendation was eight thousand dollars?
Yes, it was.
Eight thousand ninety-two dollars.
I, I, I make a motion to cut it in half, 50%.
May I ask something? The fees, just because I'm not completely sure how they get accrued, when, how does it accrue exactly? Just because I got the notice in May with the initial violation, and then I automatically requested to have a hearing. I did not receive that notice for a hearing until July 25th. I went to the hearing and literally two days later had the inspection, and I understand that from that moment, all violation is to stop, or any accrue of that violation. So, it is, it is steep for.
That was my understanding.
For me having gone to, it, it hasn't accrued over a year, it's just taken this long, and unfortunately, because of the October that I did miss, I, I did not get the letter on time. And I contacted an area as soon as Mr. Martin Garcia told me, look, this is what you need to do to mitigate the fines.
Is there any truth to this? Did you get the letter on time, or did, or didn't she?
This is for October.
Commissioner, if you wish, I could go downstairs, bring the file up, and go through the file for the record. However, there's no way of us knowing right here, right now, when she got the notice, when she was notified, why she missed the hearings at the Code Enforcement Board. You know, there's a process.
Right.
Once you go to the Code Enforcement Board, or you're cited to the Code Enforcement Board, you don't show up, if we have service, they continue.
I, I, I think you were, you were, you were right when you, when you asked the first, the first time, the registration fine for the Airbnb. I think that's what, that's what it should be. Forget about the noise, forget about the occupational license, the worker permit stuff that was all cleared, what is it that's, that we're actually, there's, there's an ordinance when it comes to Airbnbs, and there's a fine for not registering that, right? Forget about the old, the accrued fines and all that stuff, just go with the, the ordinance on the Airbnb registration, sure, I don't want to say Airbnb, short-term rental registration, just, just, just look at that separate, I mean, just, and just forget, waive all of the, of the accruing fines and all that, just, just the Airbnb, their short-term rental registration fine for not registering, or short-term rental, I think, I think that's what we should go with.
Mr. Attorney, could you apply on this?
It's actually not for me to apply. I think that there is an ordinance, and the ordinance will be implemented, and it comes to you for mitigation, it's for you to make a decision one way or the other. As Mr. Penna expressed, that went out to the Code Enforcement Board, and it's recommended to you, and you're supposed to make a decision.
Okay.
So it's, you see, I have no input in that.
Thank you, sir. I stick with my recommendation of zero, zero fine, but I leave it up to the rest of the table.
So, so the, the short-term rental fee is a thousand dollars? And the fine for not having it is how much?
That would have been two hundred and fifty.
Okay, so.
Go with two hundred and fifty dollars?
So motion, motion to assess a penalty of twelve fifty, one thousand two hundred and fifty, I think that's fair enough. It costs the city eight thousand dollars to mitigate, to, to keep all tabs on, on, on your property, it's your responsibility, you know, it's your, you know, you've got to consider that what, that you caused a lot of quality of life issues to your neighbors. They were the ones that were calling the police because of the, you know, or the people that were staying there. You know, so you, you personally, you know, you're the property owner, you, you caused a lot of strife, you caused a lot of issues in the neighborhood.
Commissioner, let's not put the resident in this position, she knows why she's here, we don't have to, we don't have to bring it to the forefront, she knows why she's here.
You know what, there's a lot of residents that are not here, and I represent them, and those are her neighbors, those are the ones that called the police, you know what? So it needs to be said, I think, you know, and, and you need to realize that. Do you realize that?
I do realize that, entirely, however, even if I had the occupational license, your point is that the noise was the strife, not me not having the occupational license. So the noise, I completely understand that, and even had I had the license, that's something out of my control, correct?
Well, I thi, I think it's fair enough, I make a motion to make the fine one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from eight thousand dollars, I think you're getting, you're getting a.
I think that eight thousand dollars is not fair to begin with, from what I explained.
I'm telling you, one thousand two hundred and fifty.
I, I understand that.
And that's the motion for the table, if you're all in agreement.
How much were the expenses that we have in it?
Commissioner, you need to listen.
It's about twelve hundred dollars?
Mr. Penn has said that several times, can you please pay attention?
It's about twelve hundred dollars?
The expense to, that a file develops over the time period of us going back and forth and setting up hearings and stuff like that.
The mailings, the code enforcement.
Was the amount suggested by the manager, which was the eight thousand dollars.
Well, the only thing I'm concerned about is, I'm, I'm just, and I appreciate your hardship, and I, and I, and I understand the rolling fines, and I, I get that, I'm dispensing all of that in my head already. All, all the thing I'm worried about, and maybe this isn't the right forum for, maybe that's something else, maybe we do have to dispense of it all and do it separately, but I'm just scared about not, setting a precedent where we are, we're waiving the short-term rental fines, right? Because if we do it in this case, which has nothing to do with the noise or anything like that, we do it in this case, then do we have to do it in every case? And there's a reason we have the short-term rental ordinance, right? So, and I don't know, maybe that's not for mitigation, maybe that's separate, maybe that's you guys in code enforcement who have to, who have to enforce that, and we should just waive everything here because it's, you know, nothing to do with this. I mean, you tell me on your, your opinion on that, maybe, maybe that's what we have to do, but who, who enforces that, that, that short-term rental fines? Is it us, or is it code enforcement?
Code enforcement wants it made aware of the Airbnb, or the short-term rental situation. So for the, like Mr. Blanés says, for the previous year, it would have been a thousand dollars, and then the issuance of the notice is two hundred and fifty dollars.
So that, that's not even, that's not even for, I mean, that's not even, that's not even really part of this mitigation, because that's, that's not included in that, in that, in that amount that's, that's given today for, for the total, right? I mean, let me rephrase that better, the, the eight thousand dollars that your, that were, the recommendation, isn't including the short-term rental registration fine, right?
Yes, sir.
It is including that? Oh, it is including that? It's, that's what, that's what you were saying, occupational licenses?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I, I, I would, I would second Commissioner Blanés' motion, then.
Madam Mayor, can I read the resolution?
Please.
Item 10B, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami offering the City Manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from Sarah Torres on code enforcement liens for code violations at the property located at 6237 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by, and then we need a, a time.
If, if you, if you would have accepted a friendly amendment to the motion to give a, a larger time period than normal?
Absolutely.
What is, what is the largest time period you can give on this?
I would say we, we could give her 90 days.
Ninety days, okay. So if you accept that amendment?
Friendly amendment by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón to, so if payment in full is not paid in 90 days, then the amount owed shall revert to the original lien amount, providing for an effective date. We have a motion by Commissioner Blanés, second by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón with a friendly amendment, and on the motion, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanés?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
No.
Item passes.
I, I have a question, is there any way of asking for any more time to not default on that?
Yes, how much time do you need?
Even if it's six months, so like five hundred dollars a month is too much.
I'd like to give this residence more time. Do we have to, do we have to vote again?
The, yes, and, and obviously, I understand her, her hardship and, and her desire to, to make good on this. Are you able to pay this before the end of the fiscal year, which is September 30th, to give her all the time, and that way we at least can accrue that on the books, and we will work with her on a monthly payment plan to be paid by September 30th, if you accept that?
Yeah. How do we vote on this to incorporate that?
Okay, so, to be paid by September 30th, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, okay? We're gonna execute the resolution, I'm gonna send you the resolution, and, and you, we'll make arrangements for, for you to come and pay.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
Thank you.
Let me, let me tell you something. See, you have a house, you have a bedrooms, you have a bathrooms, you have children, but you have neighbors. And sometimes when these things happen, you know, the neighbors are affected. So you know, you, me, whatever, all that person who lives in West Miami, in this case is our city, when we have a problem, we have to think about the neighbors. That's why if you have to pay that fine, it's because, you know, your attitude was innocent, but you create problems with the neighbors and expenses for the city, that's why you have to pay some money, okay?
I understand that.
It's not personal with you personally, but it's the way that the neighborhood works.
I, I also want you guys to understand with, with Airbnb, because you do have the ordinance, it is allowed, if I had the allowed license to do so, the noise is still out of my control. And, and I care about my neighbors, absolutely, but even if I had the license, the noise is still out of my control.
But that's the choice you make.
I understand that.
You make that choice, it's a business.
That would not be the license.
You set up a business to make money, and, and whatever that business does is your responsibility.
I understand.
And, and, and our laws have to be, have to be applauded.
Gentlemen, can we, can we let the resident go home to her children?
I, I just wanted to be understood on, as a resident, as well, as a neighbor, because the neighbors, the neighbors can also do an Airbnb, and the noise still wouldn't be their fault.
Ms. Torres, I completely understand.
That's all, that's all, I just want, I want you guys to understand me as well, and any neighbor of mine that should choose to do Airbnb, because it is a great route for somebody to make additional money, that is hard these days.
Okay, my comment was only to, to put in your mind that.
I do, I do.
I'm sorry, we're sorry. But you know, it's part of the, to create the city with, with nice living conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, Ms. Torres.
And I wish you good luck with your life.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here this evening. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to proceed with the.
Order of the agenda, please.
Order of the agenda, with item five, public comments. We have none this evening, Madam Mayor.
Next item.
Item six, report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission, my report is in your pocket. Preparations for the Easter egg hunt are in full swing, as we call it, we have two sponsors who we will advertise in our flyer. We had a gentleman come in who's an attorney, and a resident of the city, and tendered a check for five hundred dollars when he found out that we were having an Easter egg hunt celebration. So the flyer will be sent out to the printers by the end of the week, at the latest, and they will be hand-delivered by the recreation center staff. Alliance for Aging, the accounting department, the community center director, and my office have been involved with the response to the 2021 Alliance for Aging Monitoring. Each one of us have had active participation with the monitor that was held on February 24th, 2022. Copies of the monitoring response from the manager's office have been provided to the mayor, and I just realized that it is actually looping in my outbox, so you will receive the detailed response by our office on the monitoring. Overall, our project and our program is running very efficient, especially under the COVID conditions and restrictions that were in effect until just recently. The new monitoring for 2122 starts in the next couple of weeks, so it's like a never-ending thing. The American Rescue Recovery Program, the Finance Director, the Assistant Director, and my office have also been involved in learning the new portal that was created strictly for the American Rescue and Recovery Program. Mrs. Leon has attended various webinars on how to report all of our expenses in connection to, with the American Rescue Recovery Program for our designated and approved budget projects, I'm sorry. The first report is now due on April 30th, 2022, and we are working to comply. Next item in my report is Summer Camp 2022, cannot believe it, but it is almost here. I met with our Parks Director today regarding the upcoming summer camp, and plans for a back-to-normal summer camp have been put into action. So far, we will be going back to a pre-COVID camp filled with fun activities and trips for the children. More to come, to include a program, and we'll make that available as soon as we have updated camp information. Registration will open on May 2nd, 2022, and priority will be given to West Miami residents as always. We're making provisions to prepare as well for Election Day on Tuesday, August 23rd, with staff for the precinct that votes at that facility. We met today with the city clerk to go over the calendar for Election Day. Tonight is our last call for the National Shoe World Day collection. We have received some, some donations from residents of the city and some employees for new or gently worn shoes. As a reminder, we have drop boxes at City Hall, the Police Department, and the Recreation Center. So please remember, I think that we will be done with the collection process sometime next week. Thank you, that concludes my report. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, I failed. I meant to also take out of order, under New Business eleven A, um, I'd like to take Mr. Williams out of order, so if we could, um, jump to New Business, item A, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have item A and B, which are public hearings. And, uh, under New Business Agenda Items eleven, item A, this is a public hearing, property address fifty-nine thirty, Southwest Ninth Street, West Miami, Florida, three-three-one four-four. Resoning number twenty-twenty-one zero-zero-one, and applicants sixty-nine, uh, seventy-one, Southwest Seventieth Avenue, Miami, Florida, three-three-one four-three, and Ramiro Menendez, four-seven-four, Hunting Lodge Drive, Miami Springs, Florida, three-three-one six-six. Applicants request a zoning change for the property at fifty-nine thirty, Southwest Ninth Street, West Miami, Florida, three-three-one four-four. The property at fifty-nine thirty, South, Southwest Ninth Street, totals six thousand three hundred square, uh, three hundred square feet for the parcel. The total acreage for the R-two duplex is zero point, uh, four, four, uh, fourteen acres. The parcel of land is within the duplex multifamily youth corridor. The applicant is requesting to demolish the existing house in the R-two duplex lot and rezon the property to R-three private park for the purpose of providing a private park for residents of the accompanying development and their pets. Zoning Ordinance two-eighty-two, Section eighteen. This is a public hearing, Madam Mayor, and we have a request by, uh, Mr. Williams to continue this public hearing. He's present here before you.
Do you want to go ahead and read item B as well?
Uh, let's go one by one, Madam Mayor. I recommend that.
Uh, Mr. Williams?
James Williams, uh, with the offices at the Holland Knight, located seven-one Berwick Avenue, Miami, Florida. Um, we respectfully request a continuance April twentieth. Um, we've taken into account some of the neighbors' comments. We've met with several of the neighbors, um, and we're just adjusting, uh, seeing if we can adjust the traffic study to accommodate some of those comments.
Okay, you'd like, uh, this to be extended until, according to your letter, um...
April twentieth.
April twentieth.
Correct.
Okay, let me open the public hearing and close the public hearing, and then we'll take over. The public hearing is now open. Uh, this will be extended until April twentieth. Public hearing closed. Now, may we read the next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, for the record, this public hearing is open and continued until a date and time certain of April twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven-thirty P.M. Item eleven B, this is a public hearing, property addresses fifty-nine twenty, Southwest Eighth Street, West Miami, Florida, three-three-one four-four, fifty-nine thirty, Southwest Ninth Street, West Miami, Florida, three-three-one four-four, special use permit for planned development number twenty-twenty-one zero-zero-five. Applicants sixty-nine seventy-one, Southwest Seventieth Avenue, Miami, Florida, three-three-one four-three, and Ramiro Menendez, four-seven-four, Hunting Lodge Drive, Miami Springs, Florida, three-three-one six-six. Applicants request a special use permit for planned development for the property at fifty-nine twenty, Southwest Eighth Street, and fifty-nine thirty, Southwest Ninth Street, West Miami, Florida, three-three-one four-four. The property at fifty-nine twenty, Southwest Eighth Street, totals thirty-seven thousand four hundred and eight square feet on the front irregular parcel and fifteen thousand six hundred twenty-six square feet in the rear parcel. The total acreage for the C parcels is point eight-six acres, and the total acreage for the R-five off-street parking for commercial parcel is, uh, point three-six, and the total acreage of, for the R-two duplex is point fourteen, for a combined total of one thousand three hundred and sixty-four acres. The parcel, the parcels of land are within the mixed-use corridor. The applicant is requesting to build an eight-story building on the front parcel with an attached three-story, four-lever parking garage on a portion of the rear parcel. The main building consists of one, uh, one hundred fifty-seven residential units with a total building square footage of one hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and, uh, and thirty. Zoning Ordinance two-eighty-two, Section two-B, four-point twenty-three, four-point three, four-point three-two dash four, Ordinance two thousand and fourteen zero-one.
Mr. Williams?
So we are also requesting a continuance for this item as well. It's, it travels together under the project to April twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Open the public hearing. It's been extended to April twentieth. Close the public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for your time.
My pleasure. Madam Clerk, next item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, would you like me to go back to the original order of the agenda with item seven, Report of the City Attorney?
There's no report by the City Attorney.
Next item, item eight, Report of the City Engineer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Only a couple items on the water project. Uh, we had the contractor wrap up, uh, punch list items over the course of the last few weeks. Juan and I did a, let's call it a drive-through, walkthrough of the site a couple days ago, and contractor completed all the items on the list. Uh, so we've asked him to submit final invoices, which he has, and we're gonna try to see if we can close out this project within the next couple weeks. Um, so we have everything on our side to, to finish that up. Any comments, any questions? Uh, the next item, uh, one of the previous meetings, you all passed a resolution for us to, uh, sit down and negotiate with the low bidder on the design bill project for the Rec Center expansion. Uh, we had a meeting last week with the design bill team, uh, to go over potential, uh, value engineering and scope changes on the project to try to get it down to our, our budget. Uh, we had a very good meeting. I think we, we highlighted a few items that they're gonna look at, um, and they're gonna come back to us with a revised proposal, um, hopefully sometime this week or next week, and, uh, certainly before the next meeting. We'll have some numbers, uh, and hopefully get to where we need to be.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the engineer?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Next item?
Item nine, Committee Reports, Report of the Mayor.
I don't have one. Next item?
We go then to item, item eleven C, Report by the Office of the City Manager regarding the requirement for the city to enter into an inter-local agreement with the Office of the CITT, Citizen Independent Transportation Trust.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. Um, as, as stated by the item in the ordinance, we attended a webinar with the Office of CITT, and basically, they're asking every municipality that has an on-demand service to, um, adopt an inter-local agreement between each city and, um, the on-demand service provider. In this case, our, our provider is Freebie. So, uh, the city, the Village of Pinecrest has already accomplished this, and there's only two cities that have accomplished their request on a timely basis. The, um, City Manager from Pinecrest forwarded to us the inter-local agreement that has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the City Attorney, and some minor language has been included, um, to, um, address insurance and those matters that protect the city. So we have already forwarded this to the CITT. They are fine with their, uh, with the review of, uh, the template that's been created, and they are requesting the sooner the better so that they can continue the distribution of transit and transportation share accordingly. So the funding, uh, mechanism. So I highly encourage the commission to adopt the interlocal.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read D and E, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item eleven D, Request for Approval of Inter-Local Agreement Between the City of West Miami and Citizen Independent Transportation Trust for the provision of the on-demand services provided by B-three, Freebie on-demand services by City Manager. And item eleven E, A Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the City Manager to execute an inter-local agreement between the City of West Miami and Miami-Dade County, Exhibit A, establishing a on-demand transportation service, an on-demand transportation service to include an expanded route as provided by Miami-Dade County, providing for funding, providing for an effective date.
Motion?
Second.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Blanis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five-zero, item passes.
Next item?
Item twelve, Consent Agenda Items None This Evening. Item thirteen, Good of the Order.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.